Call this meeting the order of regular meeting of the Wilson County Commissioners' Court. Today's date is January 9, 2024. It is not in hand, let the record reflect that we have a full form, all members of the court are present. Before we start, we've been having our prayer by Pastor Jennifer Kelly, United Mass Sisters, and then we'll follow with our pledge allegiance.
Holy God, we give you thanks for all that you have done to this day. We ask you now, Lord, to be present in our midst, to bring unity where there is division, to provide where there is great need, to give wisdom and discernment, to answer every question. Lord, we thank you for the things we have to celebrate together as a community, and we thank you for the ways that you provide. All of this, we give you thanks for, even as we pray for your protection and blessing, and we ask it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to you, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
We have two. We'll start with the first one, Edward Rogers. Rogers, you have three minutes, sir.
Morning, members of the court, guests, Wilson County residents. My name is Ed Rogers. I'm a resident of Burnham. Thanks for the opportunity to visit and have some time on the agenda. I provided materials for you regarding my topic. I serve as the Deputy Speaker Pro Tem for the Texas Silver Hered Legislature. TSHL is a statewide, all-volunteer, nonpartisan, self-funded, nonprofit organization. We received no funding from city, county, state, or federal sources, but was established, or were established, in 1985 with the Texas Legislature to serve as the voice of aging Texans before our state legislature. I'm here representing 9,300 older Texans, 17% of your voting, eligible voters here in Wilson County. On their behalf, TSHL brings resolutions to the state legislature regarding issues requiring legislative action to improve the lives of aging Texans 60 and better. My role is to serve as Campbell County's TSHL Rep, the Alamo Area Agency on Aging, of which Wilson County is a collaborative member of. We collaborate with many local agencies here, studying the needs of aging Texans in Wilson County as part of that 12-county Alamo Area constituency. At this point, Wilson County does not have a representative to serve as a TSHL Rep for Wilson County, and that is my appeal today. I've prepared some materials for you that I'd like to make you aware of, aware of, in your hands. First of all, there's a TSHL brochure, which addresses two things that TSHL uses that for. One is recruiting new representatives, and second is for individuals who may consider, wish to consider financial support of our efforts. I'm not here seeking financial support, but I am here seeking your advice. There's also a two-page review of qualifications for TSHL Rep candidates, and it also includes expectations for their involvement. It is customary for TSHL members like myself to reach out to county commissioner courts. I'm happy that you may have, I'm hoping that you may have someone in mind to serve as the nominee for your county. Another item is my TSHL business card. I appreciate if you'd be in touch if you do have such a nominee to present. There's a list of resolutions that we adopted at our biennial session back in May. We've taken 66 resolutions to the state legislature, asking them to consider them for legislative action this time. Resolutions bringing state funds that impact quality of life here if they become law. We've published this report and delivered it to Austin to all elected officials, including your local representative and senator. Where I have your emails, I have sent you a copy of the digital version of our legislative report. I hope you'll take some time to read over the resolutions. If you find a few that you're particularly supportive of, we can talk. And give some thought to whom you might think might be a good candidate for TSHL, and I might also mention that to everybody here. We require residents in the TSHL to be 60 years of age or better, and you may nominate them. I'm pleased to represent my age cohort on issues before our state legislature, appreciate your time and consideration, and look forward to discussing your thoughts about who might be a worthy nominee for Wilson County Rep to TSHL. Thank you.
Item number four, certificates of completion of the law. We have nothing, thank you. Agenda item number five, we have extension activity reports. Do we have anybody who can come up and report?
That is Segovia, and this is Andy Kelly. She's the president and I'm the vice president of the Shannon Ridge Homeowners Association, and we're here today just to thank the Commissioners' Court for all the work that they've done this past year of 2024. We've had some real challenges in 2024, and y'all have really stepped up to help and meet those challenges, and this is just our small token of our appreciation. So my basket is for the court at large. And my basket is for Russell King, because he's gone way over and beyond, you know, our expectations, really. We thank you from the bottom of our hearts, and thanks for getting that wheelchair signed up on the road.
Thank you, ladies. Agenda item number four, certificates of completion of the law. We have nothing, thank you. Agenda item number five, we have extension activity reports. Do we have anybody who can come up and report?
Good morning. So this month, in addition to our monthly report, our office also included our end-of-year reports, so that includes different data and kind of a summary of the different programs that each of us do, so we can look through those that we have to do, kind of to sum up from the year. So like for mine, that includes our 4-H summary, and also...
IT guys?
It's working a bit better. Yeah, maybe a bit better.
Yes, our summaries are included. So yes, my 4-H one, so summed up how we had, we ended the year with 551 4-H members for this past year, in addition to our, my in-school program. Today I have with me Nicole Lee. She was one of the members that went a couple weeks ago when we went to Louisville, Kentucky, and she competed on the champion team for the National Poultry Judging, which on the back of my mother report is a picture of the team. So she is here, she's going to kind of talk about the contest.
Good morning. So for our contest in Louisville, Kentucky, we had three different sections, which included egg grading, market, and past production. So for eggs, that would be grading eggs based on the exterior quality of them and how old they are. And then for market quality, we grade carcasses and different types of products, and we identify different parts of different types of poultry. And for market, we got first place as a team. Trent Ellebrock and Cambray Simmons got second place individually with an unbreakable tie. I got fourth place individually, and Reagan Morton placed sixth individually. Then for past production, we grade different types of hens based on how much they produce for their eggs and our egg production quality, and we placed first as a team, and Trent Ellebrock placed first individually, and I placed second individually. Then overall, we had the smallest margin of victory for any team in over 30 years of competition. We won by half a point, so Trent Ellebrock got first, I got eighth, Cambray Simmons got 10th, and Trent, and wait, Reagan Morton placed 11th. And we are very thankful for our community for supporting us throughout this time. We've been practicing since mid-July, getting ready for our contest, which was November 21st. Thank you.
We're very proud of them. So she just wanted to come share about the contest. So yeah, actually, three of those members competed the day before in Texas for an FBA contest to qualify for state, so they literally flew into Kentucky at like 10:00 p.m. that night. So it was fast and furious, but... The only other thing in our office is next week Samantha High's well water testing program, so that's the only other thing that's going on. And then just a reminder that our luncheon is starting at 11:30 at our classrooms, so thank you.
Don't let the classroom overtake it.
Yes.
Congratulations. Most important, agenda item today. Agenda item number six, we have Commissioner Aiken, recent fourth, discuss take action on proclaiming the 22nd on November at Stockdale Lady Brahma's Volleyball Day in recognition of the Brahmas becoming University Interscholastic League State Volleyball 3A Division II State Champions. Please, may it be the board.
Anybody wearing purple or has the heart of purple, walk up to the podium, please. This is where I get to tease you. Come on, you move faster on the court. So ladies, we're immensely proud of you. The county, the city, the school. This is an achievement that will stay with you for the rest of your lives, that you'll be able to tell children, grandchildren, you'll make some things up along the way. But I wanted to take him to read this proclamation, to where the county could take him on view appropriately. So a proclamation naming November 22nd as Lady Brammer Volleyball Day. Whereas the Lady Brammer volleyball team at 1:54 p.m. on Friday, November 22nd, 2024, in Garland, Texas, did become the University Interscholastic League's 3A Division II State Champions, bringing both pride and recognition to the county of Wilson. Whereas by being victorious in this competition of Texas's most elite volleyball teams, the Lady Brammers did further bring both pride and recognition to the city of Stockdale, and this victory will forevermore allow the community to be recognized as a home of champions. Whereas this victory was the culmination of many years of learning, training, dedication, and perseverance, and was the result of a devotion by the athletes to God, school, and team, the Lady Brammers did further bring both pride and recognition to the Stockdale Independent School District, and that achievement can never be diminished. Whereas while recognizing that this victory was the result of a team and all of her members, the county of Wilson also wishes to bestow a special acknowledgement to Mrs. Leanne Weiss, who achieved a new state record for all schools in the great state of Texas, becoming the individual with the most volleyball kills at a state tournament on record, and for becoming the 3A Division II State Volleyball's most valuable player. Therefore, being resolved that this honor be conveyed on this day, the 9th of December 2024, that November 22nd be proclaimed as Lady Brammer Volleyball Day. Congratulations. MVP?
I just want to say congratulations to all my, congratulations to all my teammates. I feel like throughout the whole entire season, we worked so hard for this. Our first sports league tournament in the summer, it's like the very last championship game, like we all played together, and we all became really good friends in the process. And I feel like that was the most like important part of it, like we're all going to be together for like the rest of our lives, so it's important.
Can you vouch for hanging a motion on agenda item number six?
Judge, I'd like to make a motion that we name November 22nd as Lady Brammer Volleyball Day.
Motion made by Commissioner Aiken, seconded by Commissioner King. We have any other discussion? I would like to congratulate y'all personally, being the husband of a volleyball coach that was coached for 10, 15 years. I know what it takes for her to get, if she gets up like 5:00 in the morning, and the girls in the gym, they didn't want to be there. It takes a lot of work, am I right, guys? You didn't want to be there, I know. I watched my wife coach for many years, so I personally congratulate you. Commissioner, any comments?
Yeah, I mean, I'll deal with that. I know it takes a lot of work and effort, especially to get to state level. It takes a lot of perseverance, and it takes a lot of months of resources, and you're hopping in there, congratulations.
Congratulations to all of you.
All right, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against, no. Ayes have it, motion passes. Congratulations.
Tell you what, we'll picture a mini-picture.
I was going to say, hold on, hold on, hold on. Can we keep y'all at your chairs and have them all turn around and take a picture from this direction with y'all at your, at your...
Girls, please.
No, you're fine, you're good.
You can handle that thing, it's got a little magic there, it's croaking. Thank you all for having me.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, sir.
Agenda item number seven, we have Mr. Gene Lewes, county, discuss take action on Wilson County 2024 investment policy.
Okay, after that, I can't follow that now, I have just a boring policy to read. But in your binder, you will see the yearly investment policy for the county. This was emailed instead of the Assistant County Attorney to review everything, the same as last year, nothing has changed or added. But if you have any questions, it's the same as last year.
Commissioners, I'll undertake a motion on agenda item number seven. Motion been made by Commissioner Martin, seconded by Commissioner Perry. We have any other discussion on agenda item number seven? If there are none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against, no. Ayes have it, motion passes.
Thank you, I still have to phone her.
Agenda item number eight, we have Mr. Travis Percy, discuss and take action on resolution to support Nuasis River Authority Harbor Island Desalination Project at 89th Legislative Session. Percy, on the floor, sir.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Misses. I think I were having me, I apologize, I think there was miscommunication for the last Commissioners' Court, I wasn't able to attend, that was a little messy with our agenda, but first I do want to say congratulations to Stockdale, they pulled apart, it was very awesome for Stockdale, that is just amazing for the community, so that is fantastic. I'm here, so I am the Chief Operation Officer with the Nuasis River Authority. I live in Precinct Two, I'm Western Nuasis County, uh, Wilson County, and I am also the Old Representative of Regional Water Planning Group. I represent counties for all counties in the regional water planning process. So, and I'm a Wilson County, but we had Old Representative, I think about 30, 40 years ago. I'm here to talk about water. It's no secret that we have a water shortage in South Texas. Right now, we are currently, the 21 counties that the Nuasis River Authority represents, we currently have over 150 million gallons a day deficit. I mean, we're using over 150 million gallons more than is being recharged through rain, the flow flows and other types of those events. We recommend, we believe through the regional water planning process, by 2030, just six years, we're going to be over 230 million gallons a day deficit throughout our basin. That is not including any new growth, that is not including any new industry coming to our area, new businesses, those types of things, that is our current rate of what we're using our water. We believe that large-scale desal is the only way to solve our long-term water solutions. We are currently working with the Port of Corpus Christi, they own a piece of property called Harbor Island, if you've ever gone to that port or Anza's, before you get to the ferries, to the left-hand side there, they have some of their equipment and stuff, that's where we're looking to build a decent salivation plant. We're planning to go offshore, eight miles, to collect the water and then return to discharge brine that has that, and then with that, we want to rewater it up through the Nuasis Basin, through the I-37 corridor into the western part of Atascosa, Medina, and Rio County, Uvalde Counties. But we also are interested in that water, with that coming down the 37 corridor, that if Wilson County, any entities there, future of these water resources, they can tap into this. This will be an unlimited drought-free water supply, and we believe it's the only way we can really fix our water issues we have in the region. We have severe issues. I live, like I said, I live in Precinct Two, I go down 541 all the time, Raygo Creek back in September, they're, Russell King, you know, this section that the water flows over back in September, about a four or five mile stretch where the water's flowing, there's so much rainfall, that all Raygo Creek hits Atascosa, that hits, goes into Three Rivers. Our rain gauge there can never move an inch. We had that water was flowing for four or five miles over the road, not dropped, but made it to Three Rivers. Telling you, our groundwater is so severely parched, and we need to do a long-term solution to have our drinking water, and that's what this project is about. We're happy to answer any questions that you may or may not have.
So this is just the resolution, so you go forward to the 89th, if you go through the last...
As we're going through, yes. Medina County has already passed it, Atascosa, Live Oak, McMullen, Rio County, those are counties that have already supported this project. We're going through a funding source, Senator Charles Perry is working on a water bill, and we're hoping to include this project in this water planning project.
Who will be sponsored on the House side, or who will sponsor it on the Senate side?
Charles Perry will be sponsored on the Senate side. We believe Mr. Robson, the newly selected representative for the Uvalde area, will be covering it on the House side, along with several others. In the Nuasis River Authority, we have 10 state reps in our region, and we have state senators who will, we will have full support from all of those moving forward.
Do you just need a court support for the resolution, right?
We would like to have Wilson County be one of the counties that supports, I think this is a positive way for our water supply in the future. And hopefully communicate with your water supply, you know, entities throughout the county, if they want to participate with us as we go through the process, we'd love for that as well.
What other alternatives have y'all looked at?
We looked at brackish groundwater, we looked at, there's some waters in the western, near the Rio Grande, but they have their own water supply issues. Of course, we do the weather modification groups. I mean, our freshwater groundwater is capped, there's not a new freshwater ground supply in the region. Brackish is our only other option, if we don't go to desal, but we have some concerns about doing brackish groundwater throughout the entire basin. We don't think that you can pull 200 billion gallons a day of brackish water and support our long-term needs, and that brine that has to be pushed back down through the injection wells is not a long-term strategy, we might be a short-term strategy, but we don't believe it's a long-term strategy.
I kind of want to just echo with my grand judge down in Green Rivers, Judge, is there any movement with the Army Corps of Engineers to try to divert some of the water from the Nuasis back into the Callahan?
We, we do have a grant right now with Water Development Board through the flood infrastructure funds due to that. If you're not familiar, there's a portion of the Nuasis River, the Nuasis River, that's only two miles from Choke Canyon. If you're not familiar with Choke Canyon, it's kind of built a little bit too far north than it should have been, so it doesn't catch any of that water. So we are looking at that process, but the one addition is that we have to have rain, and that water level hasn't reached the levels to transfer over this year, this entire calendar year. Lake Corpus Christi is at 28%, Choke Canyon is at 17%, the combined water resources of both those lakes is at 20%, which is the lowest on record, that we've been keeping records for 25 years, this is the lowest it's ever been, and this is after a very mild summer. We've had way worse summers, than we've had this summer, it's actually had some rain things like that, and we are at our lowest level ever right now. So we are looking at that as a possible other option, but we need God to provide rain for us to even catch any of that water, which we're not, we have not had in the past calendar year.
Commissioners, I'll undertake a motion on this resolution's board. I'll make a motion on this resolution to support the Nuasis River Authority Harbor Island Desalination, continuing that legislation. Second. Motion made by Commissioner King, seconded by Commissioner Martin. Do we have any other titles regarding agenda item number three? If there are none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against, no. Ayes have it, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Percy.
Thank you very much. We'll keep y'all updated, I'll plan to come back in the springtime as we get moving forward on this project. Thank y'all so much for your time today.
We move to agenda item number nine. We have Commissioner Aiken, Commissioner Precinct Ford discuss and take action on Quentin Kibasa, Monica Salinas, and Gary Alman, reappointment to the ESD One Board Commissioners for a two-year term. Commissioner, you have the floor.
Thank you, Judge. Uh, it's that time of year where we take and reappoint our ESD boards, and, uh, we have Commissioner Salinas and Commissioner Alman in the room. Would like to take and recommend that the court reappoint Quentin Kibasa, Monica Salinas, and Gary Alman to a two-year term on the ESD One Board Commissioners.
Second.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion. Is that a motion, Commissioner?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Wait a second.
You're good. All right. Motion's been made by Commissioner Aiken, seconded by Commissioner Perdola regarding the agenda item number nine. That must be pretty popular. They need to wait for the votes. I'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against no? Ayes have it, motion passes. Now, we only have two of the commissioners here today?
Ayes.
Okay, so we have, um, Ms. Salinas and Mr. Kibasa, right?
Oh, oh.
Alman, I'm sorry. All right, we'll get the other one in here later. If y'all will come to the podium, please, I'm going to swear again. Okay, this, this is going to be easy for y'all. You have to say your name. So when I say aye, then you'll say your name, okay? I solemnly swear affirm that I have not directly or indirectly paid, offered, promised to pay, contributed, or promised to contribute any money or thing of value, or promised any public office or employment as a reward secured my appointment or confirmation thereof. So I'll be glad. All right, thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you for serving.
Also, he can go up on my office.
I will contact the district.
Yeah, all the others do is come by and ask why. Agenda item number ten. Again, we have Commissioner Scott Aiken, Precinct Ford discuss and take action on Eddie Calendar, Carlos Salazar, and Ray Skaggs for a two-year term. But I don't think they're here, correct?
They're not in attendance. The, uh, administrator of the district told me that there might be overlapping meetings, and so, uh, they are aware of this. So, pending a recommendation of the district, and, uh, would like to reappoint Eddie Calendar, Carlos Salazar, and Ray Skaggs for a two-year term as Commissioners on the ESD Three Board.
That makes a motion.
That is a motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Aiken, seconded by Commissioner Morton. Do we have any other discussion regarding agenda item number ten? If you're none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against? Ayes have it, motion passes. We'll just get them in here. Also, if you can hold the commissioner.
Yes, sir.
Agenda item number eleven, we have Miss Cindy Stafford, Mercksey Banister discuss and take action on placing the county under fireworks protection pursuant to local government code three five zero point five one.
Good morning. Um, as we all requested, last commissioner should be put on there for, or consider putting the county under a fireworks ban. Um, I do want to clarify that the fireworks ban is only for the Class C fireworks. That's the stuff with fins and rockets. So it's not all fireworks. It's just the ones that make it go in the air. So, um, I did pull up the law if you aren't interested or have any specific questions. One interesting thing is that, um, we do have to have it in place by December fifteenth if we're going to place it in for New Year's, and then it expires in thirty days and/or when the county decides we're not in drought condition anymore.
So the question is this in regards to burn hazard? Is that one?
I, I, yes, sir. So when they blow up and the sparks come down and consider the grass on fire. I don't have any fire chiefs that support it.
Okay, clarify that. You, they are aware of it, and they have said, we don't need it.
They just said, what's the point? So my main question then this morning was their opinion on the burn ban, which we'll talk about in the next agenda item. And I said, well, I got the fireworks ban, and they were all like, what's the point?
Well, it's difficult to enforce when you're not enforcing all fireworks. So if you call a deputy out, I've run into this, they're like, what? Are they popping firecrackers? Or are we shooting bottle rockets off? And what's it, what's legal and what's not legal?
Exactly. And even if we ban it, and they can't buy the bottle rockets here, they can go right over to Bear County and buy whatever they want, round one sixteen oh four. So I don't know where County is in fireworks ban, but I'd have to check that. So even if we ban it, they can go over there and buy it. And then, like you said, if there's no enforcement on our side of it, we're going to pop them. I did also ask for a safe zone because that could go in the order that we're banning it, that we can do a safe zone, and I didn't have anybody step up and say, yes, we will provide a safe zone. So normally it's , uh, Stockdale BFD, and Chief Thompson did not respond that he would provide that safe zone in Stockdale. So we don't, as of right now that I know, we don't have a safe zone either.
Well, I'd like to suggest before we take action on this, I'd like to discuss the next item on the agenda. I don't know, I don't know why twelve is on the agenda. We approved a burn ban last quarter.
Can we switch over?
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rule to go to agenda item number twelve. Motion made by Commissioner Perdola, seconded by Commissioner Aiken. All of you in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against? All right, motion to suspend the rule to go to agenda item number twelve, aye.
So we put this upon the agenda because of the projected rains that we obviously did not get, and I was asked by one commissioner and a judge to put it upon for discussion. Um, our current KDBI is six fifty-six. We only had, um, point four-two inches of rain last week, so we did not get the rain that we were projected to get. I did speak with all of the chiefs this morning. Um, District One is in favor of lifting the burn ban. Um, District Two wants to keep it. District Five and Three Oaks, they were both on the fence. They would prefer to keep it, but if it's lifted, they're fine with that. And then I did not talk to Mr. Cansky from Pope.
But KDBI has dropped twenty points since the last week?
Six.
Six.
That's it, yes, sir. And normally, once the KDBI, since I'm not a fire marshal, I can't do the whole burn index with the ground dryness and all of that. So I usually, once the KDBI hits five hundred, I bring it to the court and let y'all decide what to do. So we are still extremely high.
Where is it right now? I'm sorry?
Six fifty-six, which is only six points less than what it was two weeks ago. Just because we just didn't get that rain, uh, less than a half an inches. It's not very much. But we do have a lot of burn requests. People are trying to build houses. People want to clear brush, and I've tried to be very diligent. If it's not ten acres or more, not ag exempt, I'm not issuing a miller permit.
We've had enough moisture in the sand that Chief Thompson feels that it is safe to burn. I agree with you. So the whole county is not the same all around.
But I do not believe the law allows for county, for precinct burns. It's countywide.
I understand. So if we put the whole county under a ban, then you're...
So the only surrounding neighbors, Atascosa, doesn't have a permit. According to McMullen, there's nothing to burn here. It's just desert, but Atascosa is lifted?
They're lifted.
Waterloo?
They are not. They're still in the burn ban. I don't think they were. No, they are in the burn ban.
They are.
They are, yes.
Bear County?
Bear County is in the burn ban. I'm sorry, I was going to ask, do you have any violations?
Without the sheriff pulling those reports, yeah, without the sheriff pulling those reports, I never see them. Um, I only issue the permits. I was told that some of the calls are being dispatched as law enforcement only, and I definitely don't see law enforcement. So if they're dispatched, law enforcement shows up, tells them to put it out, and they do, that call never gets reported. So the sheriff would have to pull a more detailed report. And then there's multiple. Last time I had to pull it, it was just for burn violations. That there's illegal burning. They've got like four different codes that they can dispatch out of. It's all related to burning, and I don't think we got all of those numbers two weeks ago.
You issued the permits.
Yes, ma'am.
And how many permits are you getting?
I have eight in my inbox right now, and I did three over the weekend between me and Kenny. So he issued the permit, and I get the permit, I send it to whichever ESD chief it falls under, and then they ultimately approve it or disapprove it because I don't, well, since I'm not a fire marshal, I don't feel it. I'm calling, trying to make that decision. So I just pass the paperwork through. And then after the fire chiefs determine whether they can or can't burn, then I send it to dispatch. And then, like Commissioner Perdola said, um, District One is approving all permits, even if they're not five acres, which puts me in a really bad position because then you've got other people going, well, he's in a subdivision, and he's on five acres, and he just got a permit. I didn't approve it. So it, there's still some disparities there.
If the commissioners are considering just lifting or maintaining the ban, um, is there any enforcement?
Only with the sheriff, yes. Because it does have to be a licensed police officer sometime to take hold.
And do you know if there's been any citations issued or anything? She says some bans.
I don't, that would definitely be a sheriff's question. I can try to get the sheriff to pull a report and maybe email, email it out when he gets back. I know Clint's at conferences all of the states. I can't get it up and down.
Okay.
Just a minute.
Thank you.
That's probably our lower work you're putting in. And the leaves are just, more leaves are fixing this, are falling. On the phone, the app, we have, there was a wildfire here a couple of days ago. The fire department responded to it, am I correct?
Yes, sir. I mean, we're still having the fires. It's just...
So I, just a quick question. Did you issue any burn permits in Precinct One yesterday or who did you?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, I got a phone from church yesterday. I saw three fires.
Yeah.
So people are, people aren't even calling here?
No, most of them don't. That's where law enforcement comes in, or somebody licensed to give those tickets out. And until tickets are actually given, people don't take it seriously, you know? We had a subdivision burn last week as well. That's always in history of Wilson County, been a no-no, even when Fire Marshal Baker was here. That's always been a no-no. You don't burn in subdivisions. It's too much of a hazard, so.
So I burned your...
Ten acres or more. And so what I do is I pull up the CAD and make sure they are ag exempt through your, you know, through the appraisal office, and then I make sure they have, um, ten acres. So it could be ten acres in ag. It should be for the planting or rotation of crops that people can take that however they want. So I just make sure they're ten acres and that they are ag exempt and not in a planted subdivision because we do have one subdivision that has six lots. That's eleven acres. I did let that gentleman burn because it was one of those on the fence things that he did have ag, it was ten acres, but he was in our old subdivision, and I think that isn't...
Sure.
Um, Precinct One, that was the only one that's been on.
All right, commissioners, I'll entertain a motion to maintain the current on bans. We don't need to take any action if we're not going to undo it, right? Just, just go on. Well, then...
Um, it expires after a certain amount of time.
Ninety days.
We're in a, uh, last...
So it would just automatically expire if it's not...
Yes.
So, like, no need to take action. It just automatically expires.
Sound of action?
But what would be the date that it...
What is the date of that?
I thought it was a ninety-day extension.
It is. It's ninety days from two weeks ago, so.
Be well into twenty twenty-five?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, we'll take no action. Then we go back to, okay, agenda item number eleven. Y'all, I mean, if we're going to do that, then we should take no action on agenda item number eleven? Aerial fireworks are the ones that can really cause some problems. And I, and I know everybody builds a bear cavity, chases it. They'll, they'll say, hey, we got whatever it is, fifteen thousand calls, and we, okay, we'll use two hundred of them. I, I know it is people are going to do what they want to do, but I would tend to think that we would be remiss under the current conditions to continue. Do that, whether we choose to enforce it or not.
We can do it like the burn ban. We'll issue it when we go out, when District One goes out and inspects the fireworks stands. We're, by law, supposed to post the order banning the sale of these specific items.
Would you read them off, please?
Yeah, well, I don't...
Yeah, we got stands going up all over the place that I've seen before. Seen them going up.
Yeah, so District One is our fire, contracted fire inspectors. They're supposed to inspect the fireworks stands. So, um, it says a person may not sell, detonate, ignite, or in any way use fireworks classified as skyrockets with a stick under forty-nine CFR Part one seventy-three dot one hundred. And/or use missiles with fins in any portion of the uncorporated areas of Wilson County. And it prohibits permissible fireworks. This order does not, I'm sorry, prohibited permissible fireworks, so the top rockets, the snakes, the fire...
I agree with Commissioner Morton, but then we need to have that motion specific to those fireworks.
Yeah, and it, the order...
Well, that's all we can ban with the power. We can't, we can't ban the...
Yeah. So all we can ban is the skyrockets with sticks and missiles with fins, and that's pursuant to the law.
That's what I thought that it was. Whenever, they can still use the large aerial explosive to, you know, they drop the ball in it, it goes up and things of that nature. The reason that the fins were the big deal was is they found that those were the ones that were made out of plastic and cardboard. They would land on top of the house. You'd end up with the roof catching on fire, uh, and or they would go sideways and shoot into something and before somebody could deal with it, or knew to deal with it, they had something on fire. It wasn't the larger fireworks that were being restricted by the state law.
Yeah, they just, they dispersed by the time they get back down the mountain. So this is like the bottle rockets and the hand cannons and that type of things.
What would you...
Roman cannonball. I'm not a fireworks person, so.
Okay, so all these businesses will have that.
It's, I will...
Say they can't.
They can't even sell them.
Okay, so they're going to go out across Bear County and get them and bring them over here.
Well, that, we don't know what Bear County's going to do.
But they only have till December fifteenth to put this order in, so.
Right. They're like, they're just like we are.
That addresses use, though.
Yes, sir.
If, I heard the way that you read it. So even if they buy up county, the use of it is probably within less than...
Yes, sir. Yeah, I pulled the order straight out of, um, the, the local government code that the fire, that governs the Fire Marshal's office, County Fire Protection, Chapter three fifty-two. So I pulled the order straight out of there.
You may need to borrow that, this motion here, so that... All right, commissioners, um, I'll entertain a motion with the specific wording needed for... for those restricted fireworks. I'll make a motion to restrict fireworks, so a person may not sell, detonate, ignite, or in any way use fireworks classified as skyrockets with sticks and/or missiles with fins in any portion of unincorporated areas of Wilson County.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Martin, seconded by Commissioner Perdola. Do we have any other discussion regarding agenda item number 11?
Do you want to amend it, ask for our local government code 352.051?
Sure.
Please.
Okay, so amend it with that code. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, no. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll hang on to this right quick, because they're going to need it on the word going. We move to agenda item number 13. We have Judge Connie Terry, Justice P., for her monthly report. Judge, you have the floor.
Good morning. Before I start, yes, deputies do give Class C citations for burn ban violations. We get two or three a month. I don't know whether that differs. We had in October 223 Class C violations filed, and 255 were paid or disposed. When we went to the jail to magistrate, we magistrate individuals for 159 offenses. 16 were Class C offenses, 86 were Class A and B offenses, and 57 were felonies. As a group, we signed 34 Class C warrants, eight A and B warrants, one felony warrant, and 22 KPS Pro fine warrants. We, as a group, issued three magistrate's order of emergency protection and held six inquests after deaths. Civil cases, we had 40 new civil cases filed, 30 were disposed, and financially, as a group, we collected $49,034.69, and $29,043.07 was kept by the county. The rest, $19,000, almost $20,000, was remitted to the state.
And that's over what period of time?
This is October 1st to October 31st. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
Judge, I've got a question. What is the amount of fine for a burning of a burn permit?
It's in the $300 range, perhaps 303. I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay. Thank you. All right, we go to agenda item number 14. Jim Stewart, County Sheriff, Sheriff's Office, prior to report. Nathan, come on in.
No, I'll just jump in.
There's an order for.
I'll look at your face like, I don't want to get up there.
Agenda item number 15. We have Genevieve Montez, County Clerk, discuss take action on Commissioner Court.
Josh Hamam, and a warrant reviewed by the county attorney and county judge.
I'll make the motion to approve this for November 12, 13. Motion made by Commissioner Martin, seconded by Commissioner King. Do we have any other discussion regarding agenda item number 15?
I do, Judge.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
So, on the November 25th meeting, that's in the item number four, certificates of completion and awards, I also had an award for tax honor security awareness training that didn't make it into the minutes.
Did the certificate get to Ms. Martin?
It did, remember? It was written to Scott Aiken, and you go.
Oh.
I know, it was John Aiken on the certificate, and you called me Scott, so.
Did we have that, until we get that through? Okay, all right.
That was the only thing that I had.
We'll get it taken care of. All right, any other discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes. We move to agenda item number 16. This is J. M. Vought, thirteen, and a resource specialist, and she has indicated no report. Agenda item number 17. We have Brenda Pini, County Auditor, discuss take actions on county bill.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have here now the payment reports show already.
Good. All right, I'm going, had call for the vote on agenda item number 17.
I'll make a motion that we approve payment of $601,931.62.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Perdola, seconded by Commissioner Aiken. Any other discussion regarding agenda item number 17?
We're going to have to print it out front and back this time, please.
Not front and back. Can we print it just?
Front page, I'll leave it over there.
Okay. All right, thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion made by Commissioner King, seconded by Commissioner Perdola. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against? We adjourned at 9:58 a.m.